That's on. On.
All the meetings ordered. Returning from closed session. Anything to report out?
Madam Mayor, no, there's nothing to report from closed session.
Okay, roll call. Vice Mayor Cruz, Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Madam Mayor.
Here.
Officer Hart, you'll join me at the podium. So Officer Hart enlisted in the United States Army in September of 2009. Officer Hart served for five years on active duty in the military police with the 31st Army Battalion, obtaining the rank of Sergeant. In that five-year span, Officer Hart was stationed in South Korea at Camp Walker, in Georgia at Fort Stewart, and he was deployed for nine months to Kandahar Province of Afghanistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom. Officer Hart transitioned from active duty into the U.S. Army Reserves in 2014 and has continued to serve since. Officer Hart's current Reserve Unit, the 483rd Transportation Battalion, is located on Mare Island in the Vallejo Metro area. Officer Hart has completed, competed at the United States Army Reserve Command level in the United States Army Best Warrior Competition and was awarded Non-Commissioned Officer of the Year for both the 79th Sustainment Command and the 650th Regional Support Group. Officer Hart also participated in the Combined Joint Logistics Over the Shore, United States-Korea Operation in 2015 as a part of the 311th Sustainment Command. During his career, Officer Hart has obtained four Army Accommodation Medals, he has obtained four Army Achievement Medals, and he has obtained seven Certificates of Achievement. So, we'd like to honor Officer Hart for his duty service, and if you'll join me in a silent, if you'll stand, join me in a silent prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance by Officer Hart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February 23rd at 9:00 a.m., and Saturday, February 24th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I've got nothing.
Oath of office, Police Officer Scott Hart.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I have the pleasure of coming up here again and introducing a new officer to us. You've already heard his distinguished military career, so I won't repeat that. But I do want to talk a little bit about our newest officer. Name is Scott Hart. He's a native of South Range, Wisconsin. Served in the United States Army, as you've heard. And, as you've also heard, what I'd like to talk to him a little bit about is, while he was in the military, he spent a great deal of time making sure that he was in the top 1% of the United States Army in physical fitness, competing in worldwide competitions. One of the things that really struck me about him and his military bearing, the way he conducted himself through our interview process, and the way he conducted himself through the academy, which he recently graduated from. His staff all came to me after the completion of his academy and told me how lucky we are to have him on our department, and a few of them come up and said, "Treat him right." So, we're going to treat him right. I think he's going to be a tremendous fit for our department. And, the last thing I want to talk about is that his interests are football, basketball, any outdoor activity, and he is a resident of Elk Grove with he and his wife. Really pleased that you're here, so now you can get sworn in, and welcome aboard, I'm Officer Hart.
Thank you.
I, state your name.
I, Scott Hart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am an employee of the City of Galt.
As I am an employee of the City of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Evening, City Council, Mayor, Chief. I just want to thank the City of Galt for this opportunity. I'm really excited to get started, and I'm blessed to be here, so thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next presentation, Galt Police Recruitment Video. Chief?
Not too long after I arrived here, we started looking into ways to recruit and look for talent that's out there to come to Galt and want to be part of our community. The other thing that, one of the things I learned about the City of Galt is that community is an understatement. If you say Galt and community, it's an understatement. And every single time you have an opportunity to work with our community through the Police Department and through our youth, I think that we're just better and stronger as a city and as a Police Department. So, what we did is we decided that we wanted to have a recruitment video. And, so in order to do that, we reached out to members of the community to help. And what we found was, is we have some amazingly talented young people in this city. I'll include Kyle Slater is one of those young people. A lot younger than me. So, Kyle Slater, one of our corporals, he said he wanted to take the task on. And, so, we've been working on this for about a year. And we found one of our explorers who couldn't be here tonight, Julio Ro, who, I always mispronounce his name, but I'm pretty sure I got that one. He started videotaping different things that are going around with the city, and did a ride-along with our officers and tried to capture some videos. So, we got to the point where we needed more help, and so, we asked Val here, Val Rodriguez. I'm sure you're familiar with the Rodriguez family, very talented people, and mom and dad are here, and sisters here, and all just extremely talented people. And, so, Val here, 15, said, "I can make this video for you." And so, what we're going to see is Val's efforts taking this video and putting it all together and making it what I think really represents the city. After watching it, the one thing that I realized when we were doing this video is that if you were to take the Police Department out of it, it really is a recruitment for the City of Galt. And so, the last thing I would be remiss in not saying is that the person that is narrating this video, if you listen to the radio at all, it's KFBK's, the sports guy, Pat Walsh. I've known Pat for a few years now and asked him, and he stepped forward and wanted to help out. Big supporter of law enforcement, so really pleased with him. You'll also notice that Pat is a very fast talker, and I said to Pat, "Here's all the information that I want read." I put in dots where I want him to pause, but in order to get it in under three minutes, there's not a lot of pauses, so pay attention because it goes fast. Here's our recruitment video.
Welcome to the Galt Police Department. The City of Galt is a great place to work and raise a family. Small-town feeling is alive and well, where kids can enjoy playing in some of our amazing parks, and where families can enjoy the feeling of security with their low crime rate. Here at the Galt Police Department, we hold ourselves and others in the highest esteem. We have a team of high-quality people, all striving to do their very best. Our Police Department, family of officers, professional staff, and volunteers are all working together to keep Galt one of the safest cities in California to live and work. Galt truly is a place where the police love the citizens and the citizens love the police. This is evident every day through our community-based programs that promote a strong, positive, and healthy relationship with our citizens and the city's youth. If you want to make a positive impact in the lives of those you serve, then the Galt Police Department is the place for you. We take great pride in the level of service we provide our citizens. People are typically drawn to Galt for affordable housing, but quickly discover the small-town charm that cannot be found in many California cities. Galt offers a vast selection of housing options, ranging from the new single-family homes to large country ranches, all at much lower prices than neighboring cities. Families benefit from excellent elementary and high school districts, both offering specialized programming and advanced learning alternatives for children of all ages. The Galt Joint Elementary School District was recently selected as one of 16 districts in the nation to receive a $10 million grant awarded to schools that serve as models in the nation's education system. A variety of family events are held throughout the year in Galt's Old Town area, including the Extravaganza Easter Event, the Independence Day Parade, the Lighting of the Night Parade, monthly food truck events, and several others. Old Town Galt has owned several restaurants, bakeries, wine tasting, and tea shops that provide a welcome alternative to the national chain restaurants and retailers. Galt is a growing community with several new housing, retail, and industrial development projects underway. The city recently annexed 500 acres to expand our residential and industrial park, which will bring a significant number of new jobs to the area. So if you're looking to be a part of a family, Galt is the place for you. Come join us to make a positive impact in our neighborhoods, to make a difference in the lives of others in a career filled with excitement and rewarding training opportunities. Come be a part of the Galt Police Department.
Get up, boys.
Galt's a great American little town.
So tomorrow, we're going to be posting this video on social media. It'll be on our department's webpage, and we have our recruitment team led by Corporal Slater, and they're going to be visiting two locations in the near future, and that will be presented at those recruitment efforts. So, I just want to thank the team, they just did an amazing job. And, that video, product of a 15-year-old high school student, we're going to see him doing some amazing things in his future, so that's our recruitment video. Thank you.
Very well done, Val. Very nice angles, too. Armando, Lighting of the Night, Cost Review?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I promise not to take as long on these presentations as I did last council meeting.
Thank you.
So I'll be reviewing our Lighting of the Night event, cost review. Lighting of the Night sponsor, we have no sponsors for that event, the city fully funds this event. Our parade and our tree lighting are a highlight of that event. We also have City Tots, the LDS Chimes, and the Galt Elementary School District Choir and Band perform at the Shabbola Center. We have pictures with Santa, and I purposely left this picture in, although Al wasn't able to help us this last year, this was the last picture that he was able to, or last event he was able to help us with. So I wanted to honor him by having that up there. The Galt Chamber of Commerce brought down their food truck event down to Civic Drive, which is another big hit, a lot of food trucks sold out again this year. We had a parade, we had our council plus a Ghostbuster. People think that the Ghostbusters is a Christmas film for some reason, but great community event, see people down there, Barsetti's, and then our Santa and Mrs. Claus. Again, zero sponsorships, performance staffing, $450. The parade, $4,635, which is a major cost for Public Works and the Police Department. So, a total of $5,085 for that event to put that on. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding that event. Do you have any?
Winter Bird Festival, Cost and Revenue Review. Armando?
Again, since I did a thorough presentation a couple months ago, I'm just going to go over this. The 11th Annual Winter Bird Festival, our bird this year was our barn owl. Our tours, we have the eight tours that were listed above. Our near tour was a cow waste tour, that was a great tour. Our presentation, we have the six presenters with our keynote speaker, Paul Bannick. And our monetary sponsors led again by cow waste, Mr. Vacarez continues to support this event, and our IDC, smud, and conservation farms and ranches. Our in-kind sponsors, Consumist River Preserve, Galt Herald, River Rock Brewery. So our revenue and expenditures for the year, sponsorships, they were down, last year they were $13,275. They were down to $11,160. Vendor booths, $250, and then a miscellaneous revenue, $260. Our tour profit, we lost $975 this year. We'll be making adjustments to the cost of those tours for next year, so we do not lose any money. Our presenters, we brought that down almost $2,400 from the year before and paid the close to $2,500. Our expenditures were down nearly $4,000, but they were still almost $10,000. And our staffing was down a little over $2,000 because we were able to do that at our Shabbola location. We didn't have to pay any overtime, we were able to do it while staff was working. It took us, we took the whole week to prepare for this event, so that's why that number's down. We've already looked at how to cut costs for next year, and I already know that we can cut about $3,000 off that expenditure cost. So, we should start breaking even or making a little money on this Winter Bird Festival starting next year. Be glad to take any questions, if you have any.
Do you have any idea what our attendance was?
I didn't get that out. I would guess about a couple, about 2,000 people, at least.
Were the tours, I mean, are the tours, do they pretty much sell out at capacity, or?
Some of them were. We still had a couple of spots on some of the tours, but they were close to filling up.
Well, I enjoyed the tour I went on.
So did I. I went on the free one, the cow waste one.
I went on the free one, the Cal Waste one. There was, I want to say, just shy of 4,000 pounds of us. You start the tour on the scale going in, and so they had us on the scale and punched weight, so it wasn't all me.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Armando.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address City Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located at the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. There you go.
Barbara Payne?
What a perfect time for me to come and brag about how the city of Galt invests in their youth. As you know, we have a community garden, but it's turned into a real important park for our youth. To get started, we had an Eagle Scout project that brought water to the garden. Very important first step that you need is water. And then later on, we had another Eagle Scout project to build a grape arbor, and we have grapes, grapevines growing on it now. And we have a 4-H class out there, well-attended. We have Girl Scouts, and recently, they set up a free library in front of the garden. And we have another Eagle Scout project coming up to build us a fruit stand, so our vegetables, we have excess vegetables, we can display them on a fruit stand. Another important part of the community garden is the involvement that we have with our very youngest, the Head Start School. I think most educators will agree, the best way to make an impression on the future and the pathway of our youth is to start very young. So, we have a couple of speakers that will talk about how these little bitty kids come out to the garden, and they do really great things with their garden. But I just want to say, thank you, Galt, for the opportunity to have this community garden, and I think with all that we hear on the news about concern for our youth, I think the way that we have our youth interworking with the adults in a neighborhood, quite honestly, that is one that's been difficult. High-crime area. Unfortunately, Officer Khan was shot in that area, as well as we've had a couple of drive-by shootings. So, I think this is a real important way that the city of Galt is investing in our youth for a better future for our community, and who knows what else? Thank you.
Carmen Gomez?
My name is Carmen Gomez, and I'm the supervisor for the Galt Head Start preschool program. I've been supervising that program for 20 years. I actually go way back, working for the Boys and Girls Club, city of Galt. I recognize some faces in here, but, which is really weird. But anyways, I've been working with Head Start for a long time, and recently, when the community garden was built, Roberta, one of my excellent teachers, took the initiative to go out and find out a little bit more about it. She partnershiped with Mrs. Payne, and next thing you know, Roberta comes back and says, "I purchased a plot." And then recently, Mrs. Payne and her husband, thank you so much, purchased the yearly dues for our next couple of years for us to continue with that plot. And we just want, what I did was, I brought just a sheet of paper that explains what our curriculum is about, and really how it ties in with our community, and what our children learn working in the garden with the teachers. And also, I brought some pictures as visuals. What's really exciting is, during the month of February, we've been talking about our neighborhood and our community. On Friday, we had our parent meeting, and we actually get our parents involved with hands-on activities, so they can see what our children are learning in the classroom and around our center, our community. So, I'm gonna be passing out some pictures, and I just, we just wanted to share, so that way, everybody knows that we are here. We're here serving, like Barbara said, low-income families. We are a nonprofit program that serves low-income families that are at risk for many different things that are out there, and our goal is to educate and encompass the whole family along with the students. So, we're very passionate, you know, in the work that we do, and we just want to continue and make sure that, you know, we're not forgotten about, and that everybody remembers us, so we can continue to work together. So, if it's not too much bother, I'll go ahead and pass these around, and you can just read them at a later time, and I'll share these pictures, and you can just look at them. So, the first few pictures are the end product of our parent activity that we did with our parents this last Friday, and then the rest of the pictures totally just display, without many words, just the pictures tell the story of all the great things that our children are learning in the community. And again, we just want to say, on behalf of Head Start, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of that, along with Armando, I think is somebody that also heads that project as well, so from what I understand. So, thank you so much for allowing us that opportunity, and thank you, Barbara.
Ms. Gomez, if you'd like to come back at a later date, you can contact, we would love to have you make a presentation about Head Start for the community.
Oh, okay.
You could come back and do a presentation, and you can put up an overhead, or, you know, so it would be wonderful if you do that. If you can contact Ms. Settles, we'd love to have you back.
Yes, thank you so much.
I'm not sure I'm reading it right. Ellis? Or Jim?
It's Jim.
Jim. Is it Ellis?
Yeah, my name is Jim Ellis. I'm just kind of a handyman at the garden there, in the garden there. Been there from day one. See, a lot of things have happened there. I'm quite impressed with it. I think they do a wonderful job with just the community, come together. They just work and do what they feel like doing, and it's amazing. We get an awful lot of compliments from pedestrians going by, and vehicles going by. They stop, and they say, "Hey, what a wonderful garden. Really surprised there." Because the neighborhood it's in is not the best neighborhood, but it's working out well. We have a lot of kids running around there, which I'm very impressed with the teachers there. They keep those kids under her handle. They made the exercise, which they're running around there, but they're not messing up people's gardens, and they go around asking questions, "What is this plant? What is this one?" Okay, we got peas going now, so we pick peas and give to them. They're learning, they taste pretty good. They didn't like vegetables at home, Mom put on a plate. They grow them themselves and take them home, and it's amazing. Complete different food, and they like it. I'm quite impressed with it, and I like it. Been there since day one. I'm gonna stick around a while, as long as I can. Can't talk for a gig, so this is it. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Kelly?
I'm an education program officer for Seta Head Start, and I'm basically here to say thank you for allowing our kids there at the garden. They learn so much from planting a seed and watching it grow, and making those predictions, and asking those questions, where they came from, and how it works, and going over there and watering. And some of our students, as you know, it's Head Start, they're a federally funded program for low-income and at-risk children. This may be the only time they get to experience a garden like this, or some of them have never, ever had an experience of planting something. And once they take those vegetables or flowers, whatever they grow, they take it back to the site with Roberta and the other teachers, and they turn them into cooking experiences, or they get to send them home. So, I just wanted to say, thank you for allowing our children there. They love it. They take pride in it. They have learned so much from being respectful, to taking responsibility, and taking turns how to even just water. So, I just wanted to take this time to say thank you.
Thank you. Reports by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Kurt?
Yeah, I just, council members should have received a copy of STA's annual report. Just had the city clerk put it in your box. It was a meeting last week. I attended where that was handed out, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Paige?
Nothing at this time.
Tom?
Let me see. As you all know, I'm on the committee, subcommittee, to select and audit a new auditing firm for council, and I'd just like to say, we're on schedule. So, we've got the RFPs in, reviewed them, and we're on schedule, so we're moving along. I have something here probably in the next, what, month or so? Probably sooner than that. Yeah, mid-March. Yeah. The other thing I've got is, as you all know, I'm a council member retread here, and when I came on board, City Manager Gene offered me a training program, a council member and training program, to go visit the different city departments. So, in the last month, two weeks, I think, I've visited planning, co-enforcement, depending which side of the card Rusty uses, whether in compliance or enforcement.
Right.
Economic development, and a tour of the PD, and what their current processes are and how they're doing. So, I'm moving right along. I'll be probably visiting other departments in the near future, Public Works. Public Works. So, yeah, I'm, you know, council member Academy 101.
So, Councilmember Molson and I attended the, we had the first two-by-two MOU meeting with the Galt District Chamber of Commerce, and we're making progress, and we're meeting again on the 28th, and we discussed the goals of the MOU. And that's all I have to report for the last two weeks. Anything else? Okay. Information consent calendar. Subject, minutes of the regular meeting of February 6, 2018. Receive and file warrants for period ending February 8, 2018. Authorized master task order agreements for on-call engineering, construction, material, testing services. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lamson, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Passes on a 4-0 vote. Scheduled matters. We have the zoning ordinance amendment to reduce street-side yard fence setback in a residential zoning district to five feet. Director Araris?
Thank you. Before I get started, I just wanted to comment on the police recruiting video. I was amazed how great it was, but as the city's resident tree hugger, what really struck me was the great free canopy the city has. I mean, it really showed in that video. It was just awesome.
I think you should talk to Val. I think he could make you a great, a great video promoting your development.
But it really was a great video promoting the city. It was awesome. Well, Chris Arias, Community Development Director, the item you have before you is an amendment to the Development Code regarding fence setbacks on corner lots. The current city setback for fences on the street-side yard for corner lots is 12 and a half feet. It used to be 10 feet, but when the Development Code was updated in 2015, the 10-foot wasn't carried forward, and we had intended on bringing this forward when we would do a code cleanup, but we've been getting numerous calls for reduced setbacks, so we decided to bring this as a standalone item. Section 18.44.030 of the Galt Municipal Code addresses fence standards, and the figure that you see on the screen on the left shows setbacks. And for the street side, that's 12 and a half feet. For the rear and the interior side yards, it's right on the property line, and then the front is 20 feet. So, what we're recommending is changing the corner, the street-side setback to five feet. Staff believes that the 12 and a half foot is a little bit over-restrictive, and the five-foot setback will still provide some beautification and landscape possibility, and allow those living on corner lots to use more of their backyard. In fact, when we looked at other cities, Folsom, Elk Grove, Sacramento, and the county all have a five-foot setback, and Rancho Cordova and Citro sites actually have a three-foot setback. The city of West Sacramento allows a five-foot setback if it's a separated sidewalk, but then has a 10-foot setback for just a standard street corner. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance, and so staff is asking that the city introduce the ordinance amending the code to allow the five-foot setback instead of 12 and a half feet. And staff, that concludes our presentation. Staff will be here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
I've just got one, the obvious one, and that's corner visibility for drivers.
And you see, we do have a visibility zone where you're not allowed to have that, have that, there's a pointer.
Yes.
Anyway, the corner, you can see that triangle really is the visibility, the view shed, and within that, you can't have anything three feet or taller. And that's true within the front of the house, too, at the 20-foot setback.
And it doesn't appear that it cuts down the visibility any. And that was my only, that was my only question or concern, if it cuts down the visibility. And I don't see it doing that.
No, and as new homes are being built, most home builders will put it on a 12-foot, 12 and a half-foot setback, because that's the structure setback. But fences, as you saw on the chart with other cities, really, we can allow to go a little bit closer.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Kurt has a comment.
Just one quick comment. I noticed that a lot of the homes that are being built now in the new subdivisions are on terraced lots, and one of the, one of the issues that I would expect to see is that with the different elevations, you're gonna have disparities in rear yards and side yards for the height of the pad versus the height of the sidewalk. So, and I mentioned, I did talk to you earlier, there is a provision to get a higher fence height if certain circumstances are met. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have, it's a six-foot height limit, and we are not recommending changing that at this point, but if somebody wants to go to up to eight foot, it's a minor use permit, and it gives us the opportunity to kind of look at the situation, because when you have a lot of eight-foot fences, you really could have, you know, a walled-off-looking city, so you really want to limit the height in some areas on a fence. It could really start looking, making the city look like a fortress.
Open public comment? Close public comment? Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Campion?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilmember Molson. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Pass it on a 4-0 vote. City clerks report. Subject, Planning Commission and Parks Recreation Commission Commissioner qualifications.
Man, that came by fast. Tonight, this was actually, sorry, asked to be brought back in December 2017, and that's to do with the Planning Commission and Parks and Rec Commissioner qualifications with the boundaries. On the second page of the agenda report, it discusses, under the Planning Commission, up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits, but within the boundaries of the Galt High School District and within Sacramento County. Under the Parks and Recreation Commission, up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits, but within the boundaries of the Galt High School District and within outside the city limits, but within the boundaries of the Galt High School District. In addition to that, I have attached the two maps from, one from the high school district that includes San Joaquin and Sacramento County, and then the last map is the Galt High School District. I have the wrong slide up. The high school district within Sacramento County, and includes the sphere of influence, because that was something that was discussed previously at the December meeting.
No way you could show that on the overhead?
It'll take me just a second to go get it.
It's not that I can't see it, but the audience can't. There you go.
This is the high school district boundary map from their website. It includes Sacramento and San Joaquin County. And then the next slide shows the map that the Public Works Department did for me, that the red line is the Galt Joint Union High School boundary within Sacramento County. The blue line is the sphere of influence, and the, I don't know, kind of gray line, grayish hash marks is the City of Galt limit.
Any questions?
So are you proposing to keep it the same or change it? What are you proposing?
I'm not proposing anything. You guys are free to discuss.
It was the clerks' report, I thought.
That's why I wanted the maps up there, because a lot of our Parks and Rec participants, they come from the high school school districts. So the Parks and Rec, there's almost an argument to be made there. But the Planning Commission, I think the county had, doesn't the county have planning boards in that region also?
Yes.
So aren't we kind of stepping on each other's toes?
That goes all the way outside on.
Business to be in being in San Joaquin County at all, I would think.
No, I agree.
We might want to change that.
You might want to change the Planning Commission, yeah, but the Parks and Rec, that one, I'm open for discussion on that one.
Well, you know, I look at it, and I guess I wonder why the city made the change, because years ago, this, it was, you had to be a resident of the community.
Yes.
I mean, and I don't understand how it was changed, or what the reasons were. I haven't heard of any really good reasons. The way I, the way I kind of view it is, if you're a resident of the city, I think you have more of a vested interest, particularly on the Planning Commission. I mean, whether you're talking about development or what have you, I mean, you are a member of this community, not to say that people live outside of it, don't feel like they're a member of the community, but, you know, you're a resident, you're a taxpayer, and you have a more vested interest, in my opinion. And I think the Planning Commission, at a minimum, should be limited to those individuals that live within the city limits. I mean, that's just my opinion. Right now, is the, what is the composition? Do we have any members from outside now?
No.
We don't?
Currently, all the members live within the city limits.
I think how it started was, we had one member that, oh, one person that wanted to be on the commission that was in an area that was slated to be annexed or something. So that kind of started, but at that point, if I recall, it was only one member that wasn't in the city. How it got to two, I don't know.
Well, in the report, it looks like there was an ad hoc committee at one point, and the ad hoc committee made the recommendation that it be within the sphere of influence, and then when it went before the council, they opened it up to the school district. And there's no real rationale, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, there's no nexus.
It wasn't what the ad hoc committee recommended.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't have, I don't know that I really see a nexus, neither, for the Recreation Commission, just simply because some of the students are, I mean, some of those students come from San Joaquin County, and have San Joaquin County's being excluded, which I think is rightfully so. I don't think we should have people in San Joaquin County sitting on city boards and commissions, making decisions for the city, or recommendations to the city council. I think, again, those boards should be, you know, staffed by individuals and residents of the community, the city.
Well, considering 70% of our budget comes from
Property taxes.
Property taxes paid by citizens within the city, and, I mean, we get, outside the city limits, it's not funded.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I know the school board boundaries, they get to go with the whole San Joaquin and everything, but.
Well, yeah, but that's their governing district.
Right.
Which makes complete sense.
I'm okay with commission with sphere of influence, but if you guys think you want to go with just city limits, that's all right, too, because the sphere of influence is not that much bigger.
Much of it is undeveloped, too, and vacant land. I mean, it's, you know, if, ultimately, those, if there's someone that's interested and lives in that area and is annexed, they would have the opportunity as well.
Can we go ahead and open it up for public comment? Any public comment? Open it for public comment. Ma'am, can you please come up to the podium?
Bosso, I think she said.
I live out on Bosso, 11200. And you folks, on Bosso Road, there was chuck holes going out. I hit my pickup, hit a couple of them, broke the seal on my pickup, and I went to you guys and said, hey, you have to fix the road. And I don't know if your sphere of influence is going to take a Bosso clear out to Cherokee. I hope not, because I have 10 acres out there, and I have my own well, and I want to keep it.
We aren't, we aren't proposing changing our sphere of influence.
Okay, good.
This is what, our sphere of influence is what it is.
Okay.
Okay, and.
And on the other side of the street on Bosso, it'd be the north side, it's two acres.
Bosso Road is not within our, I mean, Bosso Road is where our city ends.
I know, but it, no, it ends on Marengo, as far as I know.
Well, no, actually.
Goes to Cherokee.
Oh, Cherokee, you're right, yeah.
Well, that's past.
We go from, we actually go now from, we annexed in from Marengo to Cherokee.
Well, I went to Oakview School, and I went to Galt High, drove school bus for 35 years at Galt High. My last 15 years were special needs. I'm very aware of Galt. I did the Miss Galt Page, and we helped do the rodeo. I mean, I did it all in Galt. But I don't, I know I can't be on the board, but I want to take Al's place.
Thank you. Okay. Close public comment? Any further discussion?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to have staff prepare changes to both the Recreation and Planning Commission to make it within the sphere of influence, or within the city limits, excuse me.
Within the city lim, oh, within the city limits?
Within the city limits.
Do you want it both the same, or do you want sphere of influence for the?
No, I think, I think there's, I think that it needs to be some consistency and some rationale for it. I mean, I just don't know what rationale was used to change it in the first place.
I agree, I'll second that. I just don't see a nexus.
We have a motion by council member Campion, second by council member Molson. Call for the vote. Council member Molson?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer? Aye. Passes on a 4-0 vote. Comments by staff? Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Winkler?
Just a quick update on water conservation. We're having exceptionally dry February, following an exceptionally dry December and January. In spite of that, compared to our base years of 2013 and '14 for January, we are still 17% below those two years on average. So keep up the good work.
Ms. Hall?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Solis? Chief?
Just two items. Tomorrow is our Galt Police Department Speaker Series. We have the FBI coming in, they're going to do a presentation on cybersecurity. We're getting a tremendous amount of people showing interest. The one question that has come up is, do I have to register? And the answer is no, it's open to the public, there's no sign up. And then on Monday.
What time is that?
Yeah, what time?
Sorry, it's from 7 to 8.
And at the head.
At the police department. And then on Monday, we have a Regional Neighborhood Watch meeting at New Hope Church, and that is from 6:30 to 7:30 on Monday.
Thank you. City manager? Attorney, Iris?
Just thank you for letting me be here tonight, during the meeting.
Thank you. Any further comments by council? We shall adjourn.
We never got the lights on.